All right. Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, January 28, 2025. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz.
Present.
President Richard Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer.
Present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Commissioner Pinder.
Present.
Five board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President.
Thank you, Shontae. Thank you, Ann. I want to welcome everybody to this meeting of the LADWP Board of Commissioners. I also want to express on behalf of myself, but also our board and the department, our condolences to those who are no longer with us or suffered as a result of the fires and what took place. I want people to know that you're all those here and those who can hear us and even those who can't, you're in our thoughts and prayers. You're in our thoughts and prayers as we work to get through this. I also want to pay special thanks to the first responders who continue to do above and beyond on behalf of the people who live in Los Angeles and surrounding communities, people who put their lives on the line every single moment of every single day without thinking twice about it. We are all safer and better for their efforts and they are appreciated and also in our thoughts and prayers. And for the communities that have suffered so much in something that I don't think any of us have really ever seen before, at least not up close and personal. It's very different when it's neighborhoods you know versus things you see on the news. And it affects everybody differently, but one thing we know based on history and who we are is we will get through it, we will come back, and we will do better. And we will do better by everyone who lives in our area, and we will do better for the future. So with that, thank you for being here, and we will start this meeting. Okay. I'll start as soon as I pull out an agenda. Public comment?
Shontae.
Okay.
People providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have two minutes per item, up to five minutes total. If you are speaking on a specific item, you must stay on topic. Otherwise, your time will be forfeited and it will revert back to general public comment. If you would like to speak for general public comment as well as a specific agenda item, you will have one additional minute on top of whatever time you have for your comments on the agenda items or items. If you are only speaking for general public comment, you will have two minutes. A timer will sound when your time allotment has expired. We have one public commenter, Sayed Koshani.
Good morning, Commissioners. I wish to speak on the two litigation items and executive session and also general public comment, so I'd appreciate as much time as you can give me. My name is Sayed Koshani. Until January 7, I lived in the Pacific Palisades, operative term being "lived" till my house burned down. I apologize I come to you dressed like this. I'm not used to going out in public dressed like this, but this is all I have to wear. So I apologize. I would like to remind the Commissioners of a little history. When the St. Francis Dam collapsed, your director, William Mulholland, immediately resigned. He took full responsibility as leader of this organization. And I'm addressing Ms. Quinones for the failure of the organization.
Address the board, please.
For the failure of the organization. I call on this board to ask Ms. Quinones also to resign now, to honor the history of this organization and resign for her culpability in not delivering sufficient water to the Palisades. Why? As we know, the Santinares Reservoir is, I believe, 115 million gallons and is the principal source of water for that area. That reservoir was drained by the department about a year ago. In all the meetings since then, the department CEO never reported to this commission regarding either the reservoir, its status, or any effort to repair. What did she report on? Well, I have here her comments made to this board in November.
And we're happy to report we're about 40% Hispanic in the organization, and so that's a huge number for our diversity metrics. LA is about 48% Latino, so we're getting close to representing the communities that we're serving.
So 49 days later, the city burned down. Your director is more interested in filling racial quotas than filling reservoirs. And that was clear from her own comments to this commission. Now, what is the commission's responsibility in this? When you appointed, when you approved the appointment of Ms. Quinones to direct the Department of Water and Power, you had not completed her background check. What would that check have shown? Ms. Quinones, among her other positions, was placed in charge of re-electrification of Puerto Rico after the Hurricane Maria. One year after her appointment, 80% of the island was still without electricity. To this day, there are still blackouts in electricity in Puerto Rico. This is the legacy of Ms. Quinones' work. She went from there to PG&E, which we all know is a bankrupt utility that burned down half the state. And you appointed her as the Director of Department of Water and Power at double the prior director's salary and a housing allowance without completing any background check. Now let's talk about the reservoir. I've looked at your agendas since Ms. Quinones was appointed. The reservoir never came up once. You never discussed it, even though it's a critical piece of infrastructure. Let's look at history. In 2021 May, there was a major brush fire in the Palisades. But the reservoir at that time was full, it provided water, and the fire was controlled. There was very little structural damage. Why? Because there was water. This time, there was no water. Without the reservoir, the three tanks you have supplying the area, which I believe someone could crack them wrong, only a million gallons each, are insufficient for any emergency situation. You need 111 million gallons of water in the reservoir in order to supply the area. That was drained. It was empty. There was no water. And your director never reported to you this situation or its urgency, instead, again, filling racial quotas instead of filling the reservoir. Let's look at money. The excuse given was that you needed some kind of delay to get money together, I don't know, contract, whatever, to fix some tear in the cover of the reservoir. That cost was $140,000. You drained the reservoir in February, didn't even approve the contract, not you, not the commission, but the DWP, did not even approve the contract to repair until November. It's a gap of eight months. Reservoir was sitting empty all that time. Cost of repair is only $140,000. That is less than one-fifth of Ms. Quinones' salary. And you wouldn't pay it to repair the reservoir and get the water back online. What did you spend money on during that time? Well, one of the things you spent money on is you approved $5 million. You as a board, you approved $5 million to pay to out-of-state colleges to transfer students from California universities to out-of-states colleges, including the alma mater of one of your commissioners. Why are you paying $5 million to out-of-state colleges and you won't pay $100,000 to fix our reservoir? These questions have to be answered. So until satisfactory explanation is provided for these things, I suggest, and I call on this board, to at the very least put Ms. Quinones on leave, unpaid leave, take away her house that you're paying for, and let her prove herself, and she can start by refilling the reservoir, which as I understand is still empty. So what is the explanation for this? There's been no explanation offered to the people of Palisades whose houses burned out. My neighbor on my street was fighting to save his house until 4 o'clock that afternoon when the water shut off. Why? Again, because the reservoir was empty.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
May I just, first of all, and I'm going to stand up. I am amazed that you have the composure that you have speaking to us. I thank you for that. I'm not trying to placate you. I'm not trying to placate anyone. But whether his facts are right or wrong is immaterial. You said what you thought, you spoke like a man, you spoke like a human, and you are putting points before us that personally I give a damn about and I know all of our other Commissioners. So the message here, personally, we will hear everything you say, but if you can compose yourself and speak as directly as this first speaker has done, we're all going to be better for it. And that is my message today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Could I close with a quote from Mr. Mulholland?
Quickly.
William Mulholland said, quote, "A true leader takes responsibility for their actions, both successes and failures."
One thing I'd add to the record that you left out, Mr. Mulholland designed the dam, which is why he resigned.
That's correct, right?
Designed it, but anyhow.
And he said it was safe.
We're not going to have that debate here.
Public comment is now closed at this time.
All right, we're going to go to Item D, please, which is...
Item E.
I'm sorry?
E, I'm sorry, E.
Item E. Yeah, we just did Item D. Item E. Janice?
Please.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, can you hear me? All right. Good morning, Board President Katz and Commissioners. The firestorm that began in Pacific Palisades three weeks ago today has devastated the lives of thousands of Angelinos whose homes have been destroyed or damaged. There are no words that can take away their pain and their profound loss. But first and foremost, I want to express on behalf of the entire Department of Water and Power that our hearts go out to all whose life have been forever changed by this tragedy. The Palisades wildfire has also deeply affected each of us as we have witnessed the impact on our city, our neighbors, our loved ones, and our employees, some of whom have lost their houses entirely and are sitting here with us. Our employees have been working around the clock where our mutual aid partners to restore service to our customers in the affected areas as quickly and as safely as possible. As of today, our power system crews have restored power to over 360,000 customers since the hurricane-force winds began in January 7. There are approximately 8,400 customers whose home and businesses we cannot restore service to because they are located in fire-damaged areas or we haven't gotten access to. We are standing ready to energize once cleared by the unified command, and we're making great progress in rebuilding infrastructure what was destroyed by the fires. Water pressure in the Palisades area of our water distribution system was fully restored on Friday, January 17, following work by our crews to shut off over 5,000 service connections, and that number is very important because those connections were damaged or destroyed by the fire, and we lost a lot of water through those connections. They have also fully refilled our water tanks and the entire water distribution system in the area. I would like next to have Dave Hansen and Anselmo Collins, head of our power and water systems, to provide you with an overview of our preparations and response to this unprecedented disaster. But before I turn it over to Dave and Anselmo, I want to say that for the last 100 years, the men and women of LADWP have been providing safe and reliable water and electric service to our customers. We are from LA, and we are for LA. Our employees work off the gas unseen, but it is critical to keeping our city running and for the vitality of the 4 million Angelinos we serve. Customer safety and the safety of our employees must always remain our highest priorities, and we have done an excellent job in this respond with zero safety incidents. As you know, I have been at the department for eight months, and that time I have made key leadership changes, including bringing in experienced climate resiliency and emergency management officers, who has run our emergency response continuously since the morning of January 7. We also brought a chief risk and compliance officer who began working at the department on January 6, the day before the fire started. And we have revamped the power system leadership team that's led by Dave Hansen, and we named a new chief customer officer on Joe Ramallo. I can tell you that after having been at the helm of LADWP emergency response since January 7, and based on my experience service in the military for 20 years and managing multiple major incidents, that LADWP crews, our grid managers, our engineers, our scientists, our logistics staff, our staff and our executive team are among the best in the nation. I want to make it clear that there is no amount of technical explanation that we can give that will take away the pain and loss felt by those who lost their lives, homes, and businesses. But we are committed to transparency and doing the necessary work in support of our customers and our communities. And initially, this will consist of conducting our own investigation, which we started two weeks ago, and fully supporting outside agencies as part of the State of California investigation into our water system. We have already caught the red tape and have worked around the clock with mutual aid partners to temporarily rebuild the electrical distribution system in the Palisades to restore power to customers whose home and business were safe. Dave Hansen will talk a little bit more about this in his report. We also are working with other city agencies and stood up a joint utility restoration center in the Palisades to coordinate permanent rebuilding of our infrastructure in the Palisades using the most advanced technology available, including underground in our utilities, and to serve as one-stop center to serve our customers. And lastly, contributing our deep expertise as we participate in efforts to assess current municipal, state, and federal fire codes and the needs of our communities to better protect against urban wildfires or other extreme weather events. We will seize this opportunity to improve how we meet the needs of our communities as we continue to adapt to our changing climate in partnership with our regulators and policymakers, including this board, the city council, our mayor, and legislators. You have my personal commitment and that of my entire team. I would now like to turn it over to Dave and Anselmo, head of Power and head of Water, to talk about our wisdom, preparedness, and overall response. Dave?
Thank you, Janice. So today, I want to brief the board on how our power system operated and was affected through the Palisades fire. So what we know at this point, we have no reason to believe that our facility or equipment was involved in the ignition of the fire. The Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms is leading the investigation, and at this time, we have no indication from any investigating agency that our equipment is involved. So we do have some facilities in the area. We do have a distribution station that's built at the top of the Pacific Palisades area, and all of our distribution voltage, which is our 5,000-volt distribution voltage that we send to small businesses and homes, that 5 KV system is entirely underground in this area that you can see on the picture. So the blue line is the underground cable coming in. We do have 35,000 volt coming over the mountain that is an overhead system. So if you can see on this picture, the green is the overhead as it comes through the Santa Monica Mountains, and it ends somewhere in the area around Encino Reservoir. So that overhead line was not, it's about a quarter mile north of the suspected ignition point, and we didn't detect any issues with that line. As part of our wildfire mitigation plan, we do block our automatic reclosing devices. These are devices that constantly monitor these lines, and if the lines were to turn themselves off because there was an issue out in the field, the automatic recloser will close that line and re-energize. And if there is a continued issue on that line, the recloser will do what we call lockout. And if those lockout, now we have to send a line patrol mechanic out there to patrol the line and find the reason for the fall. So as part of our wildfire mitigation plan, we block these auto reclosers in our Tier 3 high-hazard wildfire areas. This area is actually Tier 2, but we took a proactive approach and blocked the auto recloser on this specific line that goes through the mountains, and we blocked many other Tier 2 automatic reclosers as kind of a step above and beyond our wildfire mitigation plan because of the unprecedented winds that were forecasted for the area. So CAL FIRE has taken over unified command of the fire out there in the Palisades, and we have a decision-making entity there that prioritizes public safety. So we understand there's been a lot of frustration from our customers about why we can't get power restored back to standing structures, and some of our overhead lines might have burned down that feed through an area that was unaffected by the fire. So we do have to go to the unified command decision-making entity, and we talk with them about releasing the fire holds on these various circuits so we can get back in there and restore power. We've had our Los Angeles Department of Water and Power crews there working in this area ever since we've been allowed to re-enter. We also have mutual aid crews like Janice talked about from PG&E. The first crews that came out from PG&E are some infrastructure protection crews that actually spray a retardant chemical ahead of the fire so we could try to save power and water infrastructure. Our partners from Navajo Nation made the trek all the way out here and have been working with us as well out there. I'd like to thank Local 18 for visiting the crews out there in the field and helping with logistics and supplying meals and supplies to the crews, so thank you to Local 18 for doing that. The crews have been working to restore power, and we anticipate that all power to standing structures will be restored by the beginning of next week. Like Janice said, we're closing in on nearly 400,000 restoration customers since the start of the event, and the crews are making amazing progress every day. We're still to this day working with unified command to release the remaining circuits that are on fire hold so we can get those circuits split up and get those homes re-energized. We have established the Palisades Unified Utility Recovery Operations Center, the UROC. Mr. John Vanacore, please call attention to yourself. John Vanacore is our point of contact and is the incident commander for the recovery portion of this phase in the Palisades. We have complete faith in John. What we've set up over there in such a short amount of time is nothing short of incredible. John is working with Department of Building and Safety, Bureau of Engineering, SoCalGas, Edison, the telecom companies, Spectrum, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and our intention with this facility is to give the customers a one-stop shop for recovery instead of sending them through our normal process. We've pulled back a lot of the red tape like Janice was talking about, and we've established a forward operating center right there at the Palisade Rec Center. So special thanks to Los Angeles Parks and Recreation for letting us have that facility in the meantime. Anybody that's affected by the fire that's here today in the room, if you have any questions that you're not getting answers to, I have Mr. Jason Rondue, Assistant General Manager of Planning and Operations, and Mr. Brian Wilber, Assistant General Manager of Design and Construction. Please call attention to yourself.
Then just stand, so that, just stand, if they don't mind. Just stand for a moment.
So...
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So anybody that's in the room that has ongoing questions about power restoration, please see Jason or Brian, and we'll get back to you as quick as we can. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Before, Anselmo, is it the operating hours for the facility out there? People want to come by?
Right now, we've been working pretty much 16-hour shifts. We were just talking about that today as we start to move into long-term recovery on what our hours of operation will be. We're still going to have to work that out with our partners in MEA and IBW and various labor organizations. So as we establish those working hours, we'll be very transparent about it, and we'll make sure the community understands. We realize we're going to have to go above and beyond to be as open as possible, seven days a week to start, and then once we start to see recovery really take hold, then maybe we can modify working hours from there.
But in terms of, so people, without, we don't have specific hours yet, but for residents from the area, et cetera, our services will be available or our people will be available on nights and weekends as well as regular business hours, but we'll post it when we set it up.
That's correct. I do understand that the repopulation efforts in the area are causing a delay to our personnel gaining access as well, so we will work with those law enforcement agencies to try to prioritize our staff so that they can be there very early in the morning. I think the early bird gets the worm is what Mr. John Vanacore tells me, so they're out there around 7 o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Thank you. Anselmo?
Good morning, Commissioners. Let me turn this on. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to provide you with an overview of operations as well as our water system and how it performed during the Palisades fire. At a high level, the system is designed and was operating in accordance with the fire codes, including the requirement for necessary supply that has to be available in case of emergencies. But during the fire, there was an issue with the pressure, which eventually affected flow as well, where because of the extraordinary demands in the system, it caused the pressure to drop significantly, which impacted the ability of some of the hydrants to have water. I'm going to go through this in a little more detail moving forward here. So if we can put up the slide with the water system map, that will be beneficial. So what you're looking at here is the water system map for the city of Los Angeles. This is a very complex system. It covers over 400 square miles. We have over 100 pressure zones in this system. As you know, you probably know this, the flow of the water starts at the north end. So we receive the water either from the LA aqueduct, or we purchase it from Metropolitan Water District, and it goes to our filtration plant that sits in the northernmost portion of the city of LA, in Silmar, right across from the cascades that you see after you drive up the 5 freeway. From there, the water flows south into our system. So on this map, when you see the red lines, those depict trunk lines. Those mean large diameter pipelines with the purpose of moving water from one area to the other. The other thing that you'll see here is, you'll see the numbers, those numbers you see in blue and red are the pressure zones. Once again, we have over 100 pressure zones in the system. Any blue number depicts what we call regulated systems, where it's basically gravity flow into it with valves that adjust to regulate the pressure in those particular areas. The areas that have red numbers are pump systems, meaning that you require a pump station to pump water to an above-ground tank or a tank to store the water there, and then the water will drain from the tank and into the system as well. So that's just a quick explanation there. So if we can move on now to the Pacific Palisades map, that will be helpful, too. Great. So I want to focus specifically on Pacific Palisades area just to provide some context. So the red line that you see horizontally on this picture, that's called a Westgate trunk line. That is a 36-inch trunk line that basically takes water that's coming to our Stone Canyon complex going south. Once it reaches the Westgate trunk line, the water flows from east to west, going towards the ocean. So we have in this area approximately 10 or 11 service zones in this area that we're looking at here, and those are depicted by the different colors that you see here. As you can tell also, there's a mix of pump systems and gravity systems or regulated systems. You see blue and red numbers there, and that's because of the variability in the terrain in these areas. So when you look at this map, if you look at the squares, especially on the left side of the map, those depict the pump stations. We have the Marquez Knos pump station, which is within that green area that says 720. The Marquez Knos pump station pumps water to the Marquez Knos tank. If you keep going up and a little bit left, you will see the Sunny Ness pump station that takes its water from the Westgate trunk line, pumps it over all the way to the trailer tank, and there's a pump station, trailer tank, that takes the water from trailer tank and pumps it to the highest elevation, which is Temesco tank, and that's depicted by the 1645. That is the number for that pressure zone. Typically, those are based on hydraulic grades, just explain. Each one of these three tanks that I just mentioned have a capacity of 1 million gallons of storage. Every tank must be able to hold a sufficient amount of water for two things: one, regulatory, two, for emergencies. So that's how we design these tanks. Regulatory... Regulatory storage is the amount of water that's needed for the daily consumption of our customers. The fire flow storage is the amount of water that we need to be able to sustain a fire in, in this particular case, and that's based on the fire code that the city of Los Angeles has. Each of the three tanks comply with the requirements. As a matter of fact, during the design process, we determined that we needed anywhere between 860,000 to 970,000 gallons per tank. But each one of these tanks was designed to a million gallons. So we made sure that we were above their requirement based on the fire code. In addition to these tanks, our system also has a number of open-air reservoirs that are no longer part of our drinking water system and have billions of gallons of water available to, to support aerial firefighting. Three of these reservoirs are Encino Reservoir, which is just north of the Barren area. We also have Lower Stone Canyon, which is just east, and we also have the Hollywood Reservoir, which is even further east. All three of these reservoirs were used for firefighting for the Sunset Fire and the Pacific Palisades Fire, by the way. So let's talk about the fire itself. With the overview that I just provided to, to you and mine, let's talk about what happened. So prior to the fire, when the National Weather Service issued a red flag warning to, to everybody before any fires started, one of the things that LADWP does, and this is standard operating procedure, is to ensure that every single one of our storage facilities is full. That means approximately 100 tanks and reservoirs in the entire city of Los Angeles, we ensure that we pre-fill them. The reason why we do that is because when you have high-wind events or fires, you potentially could have a loss of power and the ability to pump water. So we want to make sure that our tanks are completely full. The other step that we take is to make sure that staff goes out to each one of the pump stations, make sure that the backup power is available. And if there's no backup power, there is a unit that is powered using diesel, and we make sure that those storage tanks are completely full so that if we were to lose power, we have the ability to still continue to pump water to the tanks that we have. Now, during the fire itself, and if you can go back to the, the picture of the Pacific Palisades map, that will be helpful. Great, thank you. So as the fire spread, water was being used at extraordinary levels in, in all the zones, the lower zones and the upper zones as well. The water was being used for a couple of things. One, by the firefighters at the fire hydrants, and also by the homeowners or property owners, some of which were using their hoses to hose down their house or turn their sprinklers on to make sure that the area was saturated. So there was a pretty significant amount of demand that was being put on our system at that time. I do want to point out that during this entire incident, water was flowing on the Westgate trunk line towards the west side of the city. That was never curtailed. It was always flowing records amount of water as, as well, almost four times as more as much as we normally see flowing in this particular trunk line. Now, the one thing that we did learn, too, when we're looking at this, is that in addition to the fire hydrants being used, sprinkler systems, what also happened is, as structures were being lost, the service connections then were spewing out water all over the place because the, the structure burned, and the piping system that was connected to the structure was no longer there. So in addition to the firefighting water, the sprinklers and the hoses, now you also have water that was just exiting the system. All this contributed to the pressure in the system dropping significantly. So what it meant then is that there was not enough pressure in, in the pipes to provide what we call suction pressure for our pump stations. You need to have a certain amount of, of pressure on the suction side of the pump to take that water lifted to a higher elevation. But as pressure dropped because of the high demands, eventually those pumps were no longer able to, to pump water because the pressure was too low. The tanks that were all full at the beginning were dropping, and while the pumps were still operational, the, the pumps could not keep up with the demand. There was more water leaving the tanks than we could physically put into the tanks because the demands were so great. Once again, because hydrants, you know, sprinklers, hoses, and services that were now feeding basically just losing the water to the, to the, to the ground because there was no longer a structure. So when LADWP realized that we're losing pressure as an issue, we did attempt to do a couple of things. One of the things that we tried to do is we sent the crews during the fire to try to install what we call a temporary pressure regulating station that would have taken water from the higher zones and send the water down to the 1137 system, which typically is fed, is fed by the Marquez Knolls Tank. That was the first tank that we could see the, the elevation dropping pretty quickly. Unfortunately, because they were doing this work in the street, the house right next to where they were working caught on fire. The fire department had escorted staff there that was trying to complete this work, and they were directed to leave because of their own personal safety. Also, as we saw the tanks continue to drop, we deployed water tankers, and I think you saw pictures of some of them prior. We deployed a number of water tankers filled with water to be able to provide the fire department engines with water to continue to fight the fire. I've heard terms used, something like mobile hydrants that we were providing because we had a fleet of tankers available there to provide water to the firefighters. We also worked with our wholesaler, Metropolitan Water District, to try to increase the pressure in our system via an emergency connection that we have. We call it LA29. It's one of many connections we have with Metropolitan. Metropolitan made changes to the system and pushed the water over, but unfortunately did not have enough pressure to increase the pressure in our pipeline, which once again was already full of water, but the pressure was dropping. We have seen in the media reports about hydrants being broken. The one thing I want to add about that and make that really clear is that LAFD inspects the hydrants, and they provide that information to us. We went back to our records, and we did not have any records of outstanding repair tickets given to us by the fire department. So as far as we were aware, all the hydrants were operational. I know that our CEO touched on this a little bit earlier, but once again, when we realized that we had services that were basically just spewing out the water, we sent staff out there, when it was safe, after most of the flames in the neighborhoods were subsiding, to go and start shutting off services. We shut off almost 4,900, almost 5,000 service connections. That was the only way that we were able to restore the pressure to bring it, be able to bring the system back on. It was until the 17th where we had all three of these systems, the pump systems, fully pressurized. Until we closed the, the service connections, we were not able to pressurize the system because basically you're feeding a leak. That's the, the term that we use sometimes. The water is going out immediately to the atmosphere. So we had to shut those down, and there was almost 5,000 services that we shut, and that made a difference in being able to re-pressurize the system.
And this is all taking place during the same period when helicopters weren't up and we didn't have all those firefighting tools that had been so effective in dealing with this.
Yeah. So the, the work occurred in the services, that took place after the flames subsided in the neighborhoods. But at that time also, because of the winds not being as strong as they were right at the beginning, CAL FIRE was utilizing our Encino Reservoir as probably their main source of water, which is just a couple of miles, miles north. That reservoir had something like 1.5 billion gallons of water that was exclusively dedicated for fire protection. Lower Stone Canyon was also used. That reservoir actually has more water than that, and that also was being used. So when air attacks started, they were able to make, gain a lot of grain, uh, uh, gain a lot of momentum in fighting the fire because now they had access to the firefighting water that was available in the area. So I wanted to touch a little bit, too, on the Sunny Ness Reservoir. I, I guess you've heard a lot about the Sunny Ness Reservoir. So the first thing that I wanted to say is that, yes, the reservoir was empty. The reason why it was empty is because we need to make a repair. For us to be in compliance with federal regulations, the surface water treatment rule, we are required to protect finished water, drinking water. Sunny Ness is a drinking water reservoir. It has a floating cover that's made out of material that's, it's kind of rubbery. Some of it's called hyponon. That's one of the materials that would cover the reservoir. Unfortunately, we found in January 2024, a rip in that cover. In consultation with the Division of Drinking Water, which is a regulator for water quality for us, the decision was made that we needed to fix that. We wanted to be able to drink some of this water down, in other words, put the water into the system and then drain whatever was left over. At that time, there was probably 56 million gallons of water there. The Division of Drinking Water has some concerns with putting any of this water, once again, this is in 2024, into the system. So we had to drain the reservoir, not drink it down, but drain the reservoir completely. Once you drain it, excuse me, once we drain it, we were able to determine that the rip that we saw was a lot greater than was expected. At that time, the work was going to be done by LADWP staff, but it went from a rupture that was a few feet to being close to 100 feet or so. So consequently, we had to then go through the contracting process to hire a company that actually does this for a living on a regular basis. We started the contracting efforts, and we hired a contractor. We put the contract out to bid in June. We got bids back in July. We issued a notice of proceed in November. Our contractor is very busy. They're working on a variety of jobs, so they indicated to us that they were going to start the work in late January of 2025. So as, as we speak, they are getting ready. They're actually going to be doing a job walk Monday with staff because part of the challenge is, when the reservoir had water, the water, it sits on top of the, of the cover. So you cannot see the, the complete extent of the damage. Once it's completely empty, they were able to see the full extent. What they're inspecting for now is to make sure that no embers or anything else punctured other parts of the floating cover, which once again is a rubberized material. So that is going to be taking place. Even if the repairs to the Sunny Ness Reservoir have been completed before the fire, it is unclear whether or not additional water would have been made, would have made much of a difference. We are engaging with experts to attempt to model the impacts of the additional water that would have been in this reservoir. But it is a complicated analysis, and we may not get clear answers either. Ultimately, the one, the wind-driven fires like these ones require aerial support as the key. And we could see that as soon as aerial support was able to be up in the air, they were able to make significant progress. We saw this with the Sunset Fire, that they were able to fight from the air immediately and control it quickly. We saw with other fires in the region that there were attacks from the air, and that was the most effective way of doing it. So unfortunately for us, at the beginning of the Palisades Fire, the winds were so strong that, that tool was not available at the moment. What I'd like to discuss in a little more detail next is a do-not-drink notice that's been issued by the Department of Water and Power. This notice was issued because, two things. Initially, in Jan, on January 8th, we issued a do-not-drink, a boil-water notice because the pressure in the system dropped below 5 PSI, and there's always a concern that you can get contaminants coming into the water. However, because this particular drop in pressure was due to a fire that was at least 300 acres, and we had low pressure, we were given an order by the Division of Drinking Water for wildfire response. And what that required is a notification of do-not-drink. Why? The reason why that's being asked is because there's a concern that any of the materials that burn, the plastic that is in the homes or the pipes that are inside of the homes, have the potential to have volatile organic carbons or benzene also. And because you have a depressurized system, potentially that could enter into our distribution system. So that do-not-drink notice was issued for very specific areas. Area code 90272, and then portions of 90402. That portion of 90402 is just south of 90272, is north of San Vicente. If customers want to get more information about whether or not their home is in the impacted area, if you go to ladwp.com, we have a map where you can actually type in your address, and it will let you know if you are impacted by the do-not-drink notice. We also have activated a number of water distribution facilities. We have currently four that are active, and I also encourage anybody listening and watching, if you want information where you can get bottled water, go to ladwp.com. We're going to continue to add locations to make sure that we have enough distribution of bottled water as possible. So I do want to take a minute and probably explain in a little more detail what are the steps required to lift the do-not-drink notice. First of all, we have nine service zones that are impacted by this. That's around 8,400 service connections. We are required to test 10% of the, the services to structures that were damaged. We're starting with a 720 system. The 720 system had around 900, a little over 900 structures that were damaged. So we need to test at least 91 locations. So what we've done up to now, with the help from our water distribution and water quality staff, once we pressurize the system, excuse me, we flush the system, about to cough. We, we flush the system, and then we have to stagnate that water for 72 hours. So we did that work this past Sunday. So today and tomorrow, staff is out there taking samples at these 91, 92 locations, and then they're going to be taken to the lab and tested. So it's a very prescriptive process that we need to follow. All the results will then be sent to the Division of Drinking Water. If all the samples show that there's no, no concerns with VOCs, then we will be allowed to clear that service zone only, the 720. We have to repeat the exact same process for the other eight service zones that we have remaining. So that means that we're going to be with this do-not-boil notice for a few weeks potentially. It takes around one to two days to get results. So the samples that we're taking today and tomorrow will have answers or at least results by the end of the week, and then we're going to transmit those to the Division of Drinking Water for their review, and if they approve it, then we'll lift it for the 720 only.
Division of Drinking Water is a state agency?
I'm sorry. Yes, yes. So the Division of Drinking Water is under the State Water Resources Control Board, and the Division of Drinking Water is responsible for overseeing the water quality of the systems. Yeah. So, so in, in conclusion, or just wanted to say once again, that we are working really closely with the Division of Drinking Water to make sure that we can lift the do-not-drink notice as soon as possible. But we want to make sure that we do this in a responsible and in a very systematic way so that we can demonstrate to all the customers, and to our regulators especially, that the water that we're serving meets all the standards. We have taken samples throughout the fire event, and we haven't seen any elevated numbers for VOCs or benzene, but we need to follow this process to get the area cleared. And that's the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you, Enzo. Appreciate that. Janice, anything to add?
I think they cover all the details very, very well. The, the water system is a complicated system, and if anything else, it'd be good for other water authorities to understand the impact of fire structure damage into the pressure systems in their systems. This is more than just availability of water. It's before, during, and after the event that we need to plan for.
And we have a lot of pipes that need to be replaced before we can service the area again. We do, the gas company does, I mean, and that's, I think part of what people also don't, didn't understand or don't, or now understand, is that when we talk about the cleanup that has to take place, there, there is a, an unimaginable stew of everything that melted that was in the houses, both from a construction standpoint, but also from what people brought into their house. I mean, the, the plastic pipes, the metal, the, you know, the various components, that's all melted down on the ground there and, and not something that people want to be walking around in. And that's one reason why we've been so strict on it. And again, you know, we're at the direction actually of, you know, the Central Command, but also the CAL FIRE is the determiner of when people can go back in the neighborhoods. It's not our fire department. It's not our personnel. It's CAL FIRE, who's got responsibility for that, for that very reason, so.
And we're standing by as soon as we have authority to go in. We are going in full force, so we're not waiting. We're waiting for clearance, but once we get clearance, we deploy as many crews that we can safely do so, so that we're executing the restoration of the power system and the water system as fast as possible.
Got it. All right. Thank you. Appreciate the information. Thank you.
I still want to say this, if I may. Just as this is a circle, I don't want to say we're on the same team. We understand the efficiency. We understand the efficiency of engineers. We understand these principles. Now, whether this is coming across as satisfactory to people in this audience or on the screen or whatever, we are going to have to say this 1,000 times. In fact, if I was an attorney, you might have to say it 10,000. So I, I'm not being funny. I'm saying, please don't misunderstand that we sit here talking to an engineer and they're making a report. making a report to us and we're nodding our heads. Thank you. We understand. It is important that our rapers, the persons who've been affected, that they understand. And I don't think we can deliver this message once. And obviously, nobody can stand before a mic and deliver it every day. So these things will be said over and over, and I'm sure they will be said under great pressure. You will never be able to speak, say anywhere without being interrupted, even if your deposition is taken. I mean, this is a process. It is hostile to some people. It is upsetting to some people to even see us sit here and talk in such a kind and calm way. I want you to know that though we are trying to be respectful to everybody, it does not mean that our nodding at our engineers and our nodding at our CEO means that we don't give a damn. We give a damn. And I know I'm speaking for each of these commissioners, though I have not spoken to each of them since this. We do not discuss things unless we're before you and these cameras. And that is a fact. We're not out running around in these hills and mountains because we're kept out, just like you're kept out. So I say that because I feel I have to say it. And I want to repeat, you will hear me say this now probably every meeting. None of these commissioners get paid for this. I'm the old lady of the group and I don't mind being that. I assume I'm on here also, as they are, to bring what wisdom and compassion that we have built up for years, for years. I asked myself when I was appointed to this and took my oath in March of last year, what am I doing this for? I mean, I should be at home with my husband making tea. But I guess I'm on here just like everybody else. None of us would shy away from what is before us. None of us would shy away from what is before us. So we're all where we should be right now to try to do something about this mess. Because anybody who has any Southern background knows, talk is cheap. We're doing all we can. If a thousand million tears could be shed, we would all stand right here and shed them before you. We keep hearing remarks about the CEO's salary. We'd throw that up and tear it up in a minute if that would undo this. It won't. It won't. So listen, dig in, ask what you will, and that's why I pointed out that gentleman. Because though he was heartbroken, he did not stand up here and start cursing, swearing, or pulling his hair out. He made his point. And there will be others like him and others like other people who haven't spoken, who are having to make their point. Make your point. Make your point. This is a consolidated effort. We are not some foreign country here fighting each other. And that is the attitude that I hope anyone who's hearing me or seeing me knows.
Let's say we fight DC.
Thank you. Thank you. Excuse me as well. I'm really, I don't know how I feel. Like I said, I haven't seen you, Ben. I haven't seen you. This is horrible. And somebody needs to say it's horrible. And it doesn't matter what we've done, the reservoirs, we can prove those things. All that matters is we got a damn mess on our hands. And it's not going away tomorrow or the next day or next year, no matter what I say or no matter how many tears I shed over it. It's a damn mess. And we're doing our best and we'll keep doing our best.
Thank you, Woma.
May I briefly? Dave, thanks for the update on UROC. It was really great to be out there last week and to see the progress the teams are making in setting up these remote command centers where, you know, Palisades and other residents can come and get services and where we could stage the support from the mutual aid groups who've been really helping us. I just wanted to mention that. I have a couple of quick questions, not super substantive, but a little clarification would be super helpful. Thank you both for that presentation, all three of you for that presentation. It was comprehensive. I think as Woma pointed out, it's just a start. We have a lot more work to do and you'll, I'm sure, see some motions from us in the future about, you know, investigations. But in the meantime, underlining the zero safety incidents, congratulating the team on a response that, you know, really prioritized the safety of our crews and of the residents they serve. That is, that's really tremendous. For the San Inez rip, are we talking about like 100 linear feet or are they multiple rips or what is the condition?
I understand it's a long 100-foot-long rip.
Okay. And for the analysis that's being done on the potential impact that could have had on the system, we've retained an outside expert for that or are we doing that internally?
That's going to be done by outsiders, not internally.
Okay. And we'll, I'll hold except to ask, has that expert been retained already?
I couldn't tell you if they have retained the engineering folks that are going to be looking at it. I know they're working on it, but I couldn't tell you the exact status of it.
Okay. Thanks. I'll track that down post-meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure our legal counsel will be weighing in with them as we get experts lined up. And those contracts, again, will have to come before us if it's that sort of situation.
And we will go into closed session to have some discussion on the legal aspects of this after we continue, we finish the business of this meeting. So we will discuss that with counsel in closed session as appropriate. Can I have, while we're going through the regular agenda items, a motion to approve the minutes from the December 10 meeting, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A second, motion is second without objection. All members present as I vote that's approved.
Motion adopted.
Yep.
Yes. We do have one neighborhood council impact statement from Reseda in support of the wildfire victims. It has been published on ladwp.com and provided to all commissioners here.
No presentation though at this point. Okay. Thank you. So we have that report from the Reseda Neighborhood Council. All right. Apologies for jumping around here, but it's that kind of day.
Yep.
Dr. Pickle, taxpayer advocate?
I have.
Thank you for still being with us. We appreciate that as the process goes forward, but thank you.
Well, the process for my replacement is moving forward. It may be a little slower because some of the people leading the process have responsibilities for public safety. They've been a bit distracted.
I understand.
The, I have no comments about items today. If issues arise in any specific items that I have looked into, I'm happy to speak up.
May I ask Dr. Pickle a question? Because I have an item for you, Dr. Pickle. Number 11 of these fiber optic leases. The last couple of times these leases came up, you made a recommendation to the board and I think we asked management to pursue some analysis on the sort of rental cost of that fiber optic space, the volume we had to offer.
We, the chief administrative officer at the time outlined the steps that they were taking to prepare that strategy. I haven't heard any report back on the results of that yet.
It would be great to get an update.
I understand to be corrected on that.
Yeah, I don't think we've received one of the days either, so it'd be great to get an update on that going forward. I think the hope was to have that report before another fiber optic contract became in front of us to approve. So I won't be voting yes on that item today until we receive that report. That was, you know, the request of the commission.
Well, I'd suggest we pull off number seven until we get the report.
Eleven.
Eleven, I'm sorry. Number 11, we'll pull that off the agenda pending the receipt of the report, please.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Pickle.
All right. Okay, items for approval. So we took out number 11. Was it number 11 or number seven?
Yes, number 11 will hold. And I'd like to call 10 special, if that's okay.
Okay, you want to pull 10?
I don't need to pull it. I just want to call it special and get the presentation from Financial Services.
Okay. Let's do that while we're moving. Anne, do you want to deal with questions on number 10?
Yes, and I have Peter Nguyen, I believe he's in the audience, if you'd like the presentation.
Yes, please. Mr. Nguyen, you're welcome to use the staff to sit down and be more comfortable.
Good morning. Board, President and members of the board. So recently, with the wildfire, the S and P downgraded us both systems two notches, bringing us on the power system from double A minus to A. In addition to that, it also puts us on credit watch with negative implications. What does that mean? With credit watch, it means within 90 days, there can be further actions. And the report indicates that there may be a one in two chance we can get further downgrades. With that said, we have about $1.9 billion variable rate debt floating out there. They are reset on a daily and some are on weekly basis. Because of the headline, the remarketing agents have a very difficult time remarketing these bonds. And as a result of that, the rates, the discovery rates tends to keep edging higher. So just to illustrate my point, our variable rate bonds typically traded way below the CIFMA rate. CIFMA is simply, it's just a tax-exempt, short-term, weekly swap, reset on a weekly. And we would trade typically about 1% to 2% below that rate. And our variable rate shortly, a day or two after the S and P downgrade, it took us up to about the SOFA rate. SOFA rate is basically a taxable reset rate. And typically, they're about 1% to 2% higher than the CIFMA rate. So just to illustrate the gap, that's how wide we are. And the first thing, all of our variable rate bonds are backed by the SBPAs, their standby bond purchase agreements. And what they are is they're liquidity providers. In the event that the remarketing agents unable to remarket these bonds, then the liquidity providers then would be the next stop where they would take in the bonds and hold it. And then that would be considered bank bonds and then that would cost us about at 8% to 9%. Now, so currently, our rate is reset about four and a quarter. Prior to this event, the downgrade, we were trading typically about two and a half. So that roughly, we're about 1.9% to 2% higher. And that translates to roughly about $3 million a month as we are speaking, per month that it's costing us. So the SBPA also has a default trigger. The default trigger is at A level. Now, if our bonds, so we are currently in the power system, we are rated A. If we are one notch lower, that would put us on A minus. And therefore, that would trigger the event of default and therefore, it would bring us into the event of termination. If that happens, then the banks would then require mandatory tender, meaning they would call all the banks, become the bank bonds, and they would charge at a default rate. The default rate would then be roughly about 10 and a half to 12%, depending on when, yeah, the timing. So right now, it's 11 and a half percent if that happens. So what we, the resolution presented for your approval, we are seeking authority to negotiate and execute with our SBPA banks. And simply requesting that they would lower the threshold from A currently to triple B. And that would give us some breathing room in the event that S and P takes further action. And that's where we're at. And simply, this authorization would enable us to reach out to the banks. And if they agree, then we are authorized to execute. In addition to the variable rate bonds, we also have a revolving credit agreement with one of the banks. And that also revolver has a trigger event of default also at an A level, which is, so they're all on the same line. We also asking that same bank to lower it to triple B. And in addition to lowering that threshold, we are also asking, we're exercising the accordion feature of the revolver by asking them to increase from 300 million to 500 million. So that would, that would give us some flexibility in the event we need liquidity. The market is not friendly at this point. Look at, we look at some of the secondary market trades and it is extremely expensive. And so that's the authorization we're seeking, is really to reach out to the banks that providing us the standbys and also the revolver to lower the threshold from A to triple B.
I'd like to say, gee, thanks, but I appreciate the information, even though it's not something we necessarily want to hear. It's important to hear. So at a minimum, this is going to cost us three mil.
Three million a month right now until we potentially renegotiate letters of credit or direct purchase or reduce our variable rate debt profile.
And we'll hear back from the S and P about the 50% chance of a further downgrade sometime in the next 90 days.
We just at their mercy. Last time, they just inform us, there wasn't much discussion.
Sure. Yeah, it seems really important to have that.
And I also want to stress one more point is that, you know, the four and a quarter percent, which is clearing rate at this point, which is a taxable rate. A lot of our remarketing agents are informing us that they're holding a lot of inventory.
Because no one's buying that taxable debt.
Yeah, so the question is, how long are they willing to hold and get their capital tied up? That's our other concern. And if this stays out long enough, we can, they can potentially draw on these facilities and that can cost us 8% as opposed to four and a quarter.
Right, as opposed to 1.9. Thank you so much for that description. I think, I mean, this is, you know, one of our primary duties as a board is to keep our eye on this ball since, you know, we're responsible for Anne and Janice especially. So I think, I appreciate that information, the more you can share with us in the interim about how those negotiations are going and whether or not we've successfully negotiated the change in the default level or our ability to create further liquidity in our revolving lines of credit would be very helpful.
We'll come back and provide you an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is what you were referring to when I had sent you the letter right after it happened and you said you were going to come back.
Right, this is the higher interest rate that we're subject to.
Right. Fred?
I support moving ahead with this. And it's part of the overall DWP challenge of balancing. challenge of balancing debt with lower rates on one end, but the risk of a debt, of debt in a crisis.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, um, we're also going to be spending a bunch of money to, you know, rebuild what we have to, so it'll be a challenging time on all sides of that equation and an expensive time, but, but critically important and one that we have to do.
36 million.
I'm sorry?
Uh, this is, the, the direct interest cost of this, not, not counting scrambling for refinancing, uh, is 36 million a year, which is about nine bucks per customer per year, or per capita per year of the 4 million people in LA.
Go ahead. Thank you, Peter. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate the explanation and appreciate you're doing it in a way that, um, some of us who don't know, know this world as well as others do, but thank you for doing it in a way that we can understand it, myself in particular. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anne, anything to add or?
Uh, no, uh, we have the item. We request your approval.
Okay. All right, so, um, let's see, under item.
Chief.
Items one through, what have I got?
Nine. Nine.
One through nine.
Uh-huh, and then 10.
We don't have to, we can vote on 10 now because we got the.
One through 10, 12 through 18.
Okay. Items one through 10 and 12 through 18 are before us.
Motion approved. Items one through 10 and 12 through 18.
And I would second it.
Motion to second. All members present being recorded as I votes. Thank you. Those items are passed.
Richard, while we're here, may I have the floor to read in this?
Yeah.
Additional motion?
Please.
Uh, you all have an additional motion in front of you that I introduced after the, um, after the agenda was set for this meeting.
Got it.
I'm going to make one quick edit on the fly to the title of the motion. It will be retitled to "Motion to the People of LEDWP," um, and I'm going to read it into the record now. Whereas the Palisades Fire, which began January 7th, 2025, which we'll fix that too, is the largest, most destructive and costliest fire in the city of Los Angeles's history, displacing countless households, burning tens of thousands of acres, destroying thousands of homes, hundreds of businesses, and damaging or destroying places of worship, cultural centers, community spaces, and other significant community-serving resources. And whereas the enormous challenges the city faced in response to the Palisades Fire increased further as more fires were erupted and rapidly spread, fanned by the violent January 2025 windstorm, including the Sunset, Eaton, Kenneth, and Hurst Fires. And whereas the demand placed on LEDWP's infrastructure, particularly during the height of the fires, was unprecedented and required an extraordinary and sustained response from LEDWP's workforce. And whereas in the face of this devastating emergency, the dedicated employees of LEDWP exhibited remarkable courage, resilience, and commitment to public service. And whereas many of these employees selflessly put aside their personal losses, hardships, including the devastating impact of having their own homes threatened or destroyed by the fires, to ensure that the essential services of water and power were maintained to the fullest extent possible and that safety measures were implemented to protect the community. And whereas these efforts were supported by LEDWP's labor partners, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 18, the Management Employees Association, MEA, the Service Employees International Union, Local 721, the Water and Power Dispatchers Association, and the Association of Confidential Employees. And whereas the Navajo Nation generously provided a team of Navajo Scouts fire crew to assist in battling the fires raging through Los Angeles, and a team of 10 linemen from the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority to assist in restoring power to fire-damaged parts of our system. And Pacific Gas and Electric Company generously provided 25 Safety Infrastructure Protection Team assisting with brush clearance around critical assets and three additional line crews to assist in restoring power. And whereas, all of these efforts not only helped safeguard critical water and power infrastructure, but also provided vital support to Los Angeles community during this crisis, demonstrating the highest ideals of public service and exemplifying the strength of community bonds in the face of adversity. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Water and Power Commissioners hereby commends the unwavering dedication and exceptional response of LEDWP's employees, labor partners, and mutual aid donors to the January 2025 fires, including the Palisades, Eaton, Sunset, uh, Hurst, and Kenneth Fires, and to the destruction caused by the January 2025 windstorm, as well as the continued efforts of LEDWP employees and labor partners to address the challenge of a long recovery process. And be it further resolved that the Secretary be instructed to place this resolution in the minutes of this board as a permanent record, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to LEDWP's labor partners, the Navajo Nation, and all LEDWP employees as a token of gratitude and recognition for their extraordinary service and commitment during this challenging time. And that is the resolution I propose.
All right. That is before us.
I'd like to second this resolution.
Thank you, Noreen. Any other comments on the resolution?
I think it is, um, very appropriate, and although our, we face out toward our ratepayers and those that, um, you know, are affected by this, we certainly know the work of our internal people. We know people who were evacuated. We know people who had many hardships. And if we think that fire was bad, it would have been even worse without the effort, the water, the thought, the, all the effort that you put forth. So in that regard, please, notwithstanding anything that I've said as to the public, please know that I stand with the men, women of LEDWP and all of those who back us, support us 24/7, no matter what is going on. And thank you, Commissioner, for having the thought to put this together.
Without objection, um, moved by Vice Chair McGraw, seconded by, um.
Katz.
Ms. Katz. What's her name? Ms. Katz. I have trouble with that name. Ms. Katz, um, thank you. Uh, without objection, all members present being recorded as I votes. Such shall be the order, and appropriate transmittal of that will also take place.
Motion adopted.
I'm sorry?
Motion adopted.
Motion adopted. Anything else?
Um, item I, item I, reports on committee activity?
We're okay on reports on committee activities at this point. If, um, then you're up, um, this is, you get to give your speech, please. Uh, if you would read us into closed session, we will go into closed session for discussion of legal issues facing the, um, the department.
The Board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session in the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code. Thank you.
All right. And thank you all for attending, and we will now go into closed session.